The December 2nd, 2019 meeting in the Anarondo County Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation or remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Pickard will leave us in the invocation, then we will ask Scout Troop 160 to come forward to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good evening. I would like to use this time to observe a moment of silence in honor of firefighter Brent Han, who was laid to rest earlier today. Thank you. Albert Einstein said, "Learn from yesterday, live for today, and hope for tomorrow. May we listen to one another intently with the purpose of bettering ourselves and our community. May we humbly accept the responsibilities assigned to us, and may we carry out each of these responsibilities to the best of our capabilities."
Thank you. Can we have Scout Troop 160 come forward and help us lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Madam Secretary will have the light lit up, and whenever you guys are ready.
All right. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again for helping us with the pledge, and welcome. Madam Secretary, please read the ethics statement.
The Ethics Commission has asked that I advise you that under certain circumstances, members of the public may qualify as lobbyists when they testify before the county council. If so, the law requires that certain information be filed with the Ethics Commission. The Chairman of the Ethics Commission has asked that those present review the Ethics Commission information in the foyer of these chambers. If there are any questions about lobbying requirements, speakers should contact the Ethics Commission in the Heritage Office complex on Reva Road.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. May I have a motion to suspend the rules and introduce and vote on Resolution Number 5119 out of order?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Secretary, could you please call to the roll?
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. The motion to suspend the rules to introduce here and vote on Resolution 5119 is passed.
Madam Secretary, before you read Resolution 5119, Councilman Volkey wanted to state something.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would ask to be added as a co-sponsor to Resolution 5119.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, please read Resolution Number 5119.
Resolution Number 5119, resolution electing a Chairman and Vice Chairman of the County Council. Where Section 302A of the Anarondo County Charter provides that the County Council at its regular meeting or session in December of each year shall elect a Chairman and Vice Chairman from its membership, now therefore be it resolved by the County Council of Anarondo County, Maryland, that it hereby elects Allison M. Picard, Chairman of the Council -- County Council, and be it further resolved that it hereby elect Sarah F. Lacy, Vice Chairman of the County Council.
Thank you. I am the lead sponsor on this. I think that certainly the resolution states, and certainly excited for Vice Chairwoman Pickard and Ms. Lacy to step forward, and we see that our fellow council members are also willing to step up, so I'm certainly proud, and it's been an interesting year, but I think that we've done a lot as a council, and I'm certainly glad to pass the gavel if this passes. So, Madam Secretary, could you please call the roll on Resolution 5119?
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Resolution Number 5119 is adopted.
I know you're very excited to get your own gavel that you can use whenever you like. Andrew Pruski, Chairman of Anarondo County Council, December 3rd, 2018 through tonight, December 2nd, 2019.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
So, the new Chairman usually runs the meeting from their existing seat, rather than disrupting things by playing musical chairs, shifting people around. Since I do not have the main microphone console, I'd like to ask my fellow council members to please verbally ask to be recognized. All right. Now I need my glasses. I believe Ms. Rodvian, Councilwoman Rodvian, has a citation to present?
Yes, thank you for letting me take a moment to do this. I know I've seen your picture in the paper, but Mr. Howard, ah, come on up. This is really exciting. So if, here, I'll come around front.
So just to be really brief and tell the story, you might even be able to tell it better than I can. But Mr. Smith Price was a man, an African-American man, who was born a slave in Anarondo County, Maryland, in Annapolis, and later in his life, the landowner who he belonged to, which still comes odd to say, set him free, and he ended up becoming a landlord, a businessman, and entrepreneur in the city of Annapolis, and contributed all kinds of things to the city. His remains were buried in a location that were later exhumed when a construction project took place, and those remains were put in a vault in historic, one of the historic Calver County, thank you, and were eventually correctly identified as Mr. Smith Price, along with the remains of a young man who was believed to be his son. And they, the community, led by Janice Case Williams, who's one of our wonderful local historians, decided and gathered community support to make sure that this man who had whose remains had been exhumed and not, you know, kind of, no one would want their family member, their family member removed from their resting place in that way, to give him a proper burial. And Mr. Howard, because he had skills in woodcraft, volunteered his services to make, I guess, coffins or funeral boxes for the remains for them to have a proper burial. And if you Google the name Smith Price, and they're just beautiful boxes, so it's really beautiful that you contributed your skills in that way. And so I would like to present to you, the County Council of Anarondo County offers this citation presented to you, Jimmy Howard, in recognition. The County Council wishes to acknowledge and thank you for your extraordinary efforts to build the coffins for the Smith Price homecoming. The hours spent and the beautiful end result were an outstanding gift to the city of Annapolis and Anarondo County. Anarondo County is very proud of your achievement and is thankful to have you as an employee of your outstanding talent among our ranks. The County Council hereby recognizes and thanks you for your contribution. So thank you very much.
We will now invite members of the audience who signed up before the meeting to address the council briefly on any subject not included in the printed agenda. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I don't have a sign-up sheet, do you? We don't have a sign-up sheet tonight, so if anybody is, I see Ms. Johnson. I think you're it tonight, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I'm it.
Please state your name and address for the record, and you have two minutes.
Julie Johnson, PO Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. I come before you tonight because with all of the international news, the impeachment materials, I want to teach you a couple of new vocabulary words, because so many people have so little understanding of the relationship between the Ukraine and Russia, and of course, that relationship is very important to the federal situation, which impacts all of us. But most people don't understand how it could. So the word I want to teach you is holode more. You know the word Holocaust, which means mass genocide by execution and other ways. But the word holode more is genocide by starvation. And what happened is, most of you know that in Russia, the Bolsheviks took over in 1917, and you had, you know, that early political conflict, and ultimately Stalin came into power. In 1929, he wanted to collectivize all the farms in Russia. This was strongly opposed by the Russian people, you know, who were growing the crops. And so, but weather and other things, the crops were massive failure. So Russia was facing massive starvation, both for political reasons, Stalin said, "I can't have that," so he sent the Russian army into the Ukraine and stole the bumper crop from the Ukrainian farmers who had grown it, leaving them not enough food to survive. Somewhere between 2 and 10 million people died in the Ukraine. The Ukrainians have a deep distrust and animosity toward the Russians who did this to them. So when you hear the, all of this stuff, this is a slice of it. Clearly, I need more than two minutes.
We'll see you next time. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
The word holode more.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who did not sign up who wishes to speak? Seeing no movement, the invitation to audiences now closed. Is there any item any council member would like to place on the agenda? Okay. May I have a motion that the partial reading of any bill, resolution, amendment to a bill or resolution, or minutes constitutes the reading of the whole?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Madam Secretary, please read the minutes of the November 18th, 2019 meeting.
The meeting was called to order by Chairman Andrew Pruski at 7:00 PM and opened with the invocation given by Ms. Lacy, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Boy Scouts Troops 884, 192, and 721 Millersville.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 18th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. The motion carries. The minutes of the November 18th, 2019 meeting stand approved as read. Madam Secretary, please read the titles of the bills to be introduced this evening.
Bill Number 9119, An Ordinance Concerning Personnel Positions in the Classified Service. Bill Number 9219, An Ordinance Concerning Fair Housing Exceptions.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill 8219.
Bill Number 8219, An Ordinance Concerning Milburgh Special Community Benefit District.
This bill is sponsored by the administration. Mr. Barron is here.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Good evening.
Members of the committee. So with me at the table from Budget is Mr. Beecham, and from Law, Ms. Bray. We discussed 8219 at the work session. As a reminder, this bill amends the purposes of the Milburgh Special Community Benefit District. Milburgh's a community in District 3. They first approached the county in 2014 with a request to form an SCBD. They listed a number of purposes, including operating the community facilities and pool. The county advised them to include operations in their purposes to address this desire. As you know, the petition process requires a lot of community input and negotiation that the county is generally not involved with. It's generally put together by volunteer members of the community. When the draft petition came back for review by the Office of Law and Budget, it did not include the term "operations." At that time, it was our understanding that the SCBD revenues would supplement voluntary dues, including club and pool membership for the community. The absence of operations therefore didn't raise any red flags with the county. During the final hearing on forming the SCBD earlier this year, community reps indicated for the first time that they were seeking to replace voluntary dues entirely with the SCBD revenues, generating a conversation immediately following that council meeting, which the SCBD was approved, about how the purposes did not cover operating expenses. They were presented with a question whether to continue funding pool operations through voluntary dues or membership fees, which would not require a change to the SCBD purposes. Milburgh sent the Office of Law and the Budget and Law Research, all correspondence in this matter, to confirm that the community either ignored the 2015 advice or chose not to include operations in their purpose. At that point, we worked with the community to draft a revised petition, which was expeditiously approved and circulated among the community. That petition drive resulted in a majority of owners approving the modification, therefore the bill you have in front of you. With that, folks at the table are happy to answer any questions, and we ask you move the bill.
Do we have any questions from the council? Mr. Volkey?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not so much a question, but I want to just kind of, sort of offer something that I understood about this history a little differently. My understanding from talking to the community, obviously, this is in my district, and I've talked to these, the community members pretty extensively. I'm not sure that it's quite accurate to say that they chose not to put it in there. I think what happened was, they initially intended this to have the pool operation subsumed within it. They got conflicting advice from Law and Budget over time, and obviously, there have been multiple administrations that they've been dealing with, and ultimately, they were assured that they didn't need to have this particular piece in the language of what they were doing. And then subsequently, this was passed, they came back, and they said, "Hey, we'd like to do this," and they were told, "You can't do that," which is why they're amending it. That had been my understanding. Ms. Bray, I know you've been intimately involved in this, but I just don't want to mischaracterize, because I know these folks have put a lot of time and effort into this, so I don't want to make it sound like this was a community screw-up. I think this was a comedy of errors, is what it is, and I'm not sure that any one party is to blame for it. I'm glad we're correcting it, but I just want to be fair to the community and the people from the community who have put a lot of time and effort, and Ms. Bray, who's put a lot of time and effort into this, too.
Thank you. If I could just respond, I would agree with that characterization. I don't think that the community made a mistake here so much as perhaps in the process of the community drafting the petition, the Office of Law and the Office of Budget commenting on it, and then the community, again, deciding what to do with those comments.
Right.
And obviously, there was a lot of conflicting information going on amongst the community at that time about who was going to be involved in the SCBD, which properties qualified, there were a lot of moving parts.
Right.
Again, I think what Mr. Barron said is critical, is that because these are little democracies, and we recognize that the community chooses its purposes, when a community submits to us a petition that lists permitted purposes but might omit other permitted purposes, we really don't make a judgment call on that. The Office of Law and the Office of Budget are simply reviewing to make sure that the purposes that are proposed are ones that are permitted under the law. And so, operations got omitted. When listening to the community testify on the formation earlier this year, and I heard for the first time that they intended to completely remove voluntary dues and operate the pool, we went back and we looked at the language and determined that operating wasn't in there. And we looked back at the correspondence, and there was pretty direct correspondence saying, "If you want to pay salaries and other operating expenses, you need to have operating that word specifically in here, because otherwise, we view these as capital-type improvements."
Right.
So that's, that was the genesis of the confusion. I'm not sure whose part or who is responsible, but the point, I think, that's important today is that we've all worked together to correct it.
Yep.
Happy to amend my comments to a comedy of errors.
Thank you, Mr. Barron. Thank you, Ms. Bray.
Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no other comments from the council, we can move on to public hearing. I don't have anybody signed up. Is there anyone here to speak? We can then close the public hearing. Madam Secretary, can you, please read the title of Bill Number 8219.
Bill Number 8219, An Ordinance Concerning Milburgh Special Community Benefit District.
Again, seeing no other discussion, Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Bill Number 8219.
Mr. Volkey?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none in the negative. Bill Number 8219 is passed.
Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8319.
Bill Number 8319, An Ordinance Concerning Licenses, Towing Companies, Nonconsensual Towing, Storage Facilities, and Redemption Areas Blanket Authorizations to Do.
Mr. Pruski and Mr. Volkey are sponsors to this bill.
Yes, Madam Chair, if you don't mind. So I know a lot of people don't attend the work sessions where the council has a discussion on these bills, but this originated in my area, where we have several lots that are located near public parking spots, where we have folks who are really abusing, you know, private property and gated areas with signs, and certainly, I think if somebody has a private lot and labeled, as I stated in the bill, you know, there should be obviously consequences allowed for towing. And then as far as the other part, I'm sure Mr. Volkey can chime in, we happen to be working on similar pieces of legislation, and all of a sudden, Ms. Schewitt said, "Well, why don't we talk?" So that's how we kind of came together and tried to work through, you know, some of the issues. But again, the piece that I'm, originated from me is regards to the lots that have signage in closed areas, where you literally have people just, you know, parking on private property, signage is there, and there's really nothing for the property owner to do. And there's instances where we've had a daycare facility where parents are dropping off, where, you know, cars are sitting there and they can't even drop their kids off. I mean, it's kind of gotten to that piece, just to kind of give you an example, but that's pretty much all I have to add. I'm sure Mr. Volkey can add the other part.
I have very little other than to just follow up to what Mr. Pruski said, which is, this was an issue that was brought to my attention from some of my constituents about the distances that folks in our county were being forced to travel in terms of vehicles that were towed and then getting them back. So there was concern about their access to these facilities.
Mr. Barron, for the administration?
Sure. Thank you again, Madam Chair. Bill 83, oh, first, let me introduce who I have at the table, from the police, Major Passman, from IMP, Mr. Deck and Mr. Bryant, and from Law, Ms. Kenny, and Pete Barron with the administration. 8319 is not an administration bill, but I do want to thank both sponsors and the council attorney for including the administration in the review process before introduction, getting a chance to have some of our questions answered beforehand, I think helped a lot. So as was mentioned, this bill addresses two issues, sort of the secure lots and the redemption of towed vehicles. I believe there will be amendments, and I'm sure we're going to hear from some members of the community. The administration has no opposition as it relates to the secure lots issue, and the administration understands there are some questions related to redemption areas in the county versus some other areas of the county, as was raised in the work session, where actually going a couple of miles out of county might be preferable, and we have no position on that section of the bill.
Do we have any further questions from my colleagues? We'll now move to the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. We do have individuals signed up, and I'll bring you up six at a time. Elizabeth Bergoon, Aaron Greenfield, Karen Smith, Christina Patrick, Charles Parrish, As you're getting seated, I'll just remind everybody to state your name and address, and you each have two minutes. We'll begin with Ms. Bergoon. Am I saying that right?
Yeah, you're doing great.
Okay, great.
My name's Elizabeth Bergoon. I live at 101 Lamar Road, Glenburne, Maryland, 21060. I work for NCR Towing and Recovery. My position there is to meet with the property managers for different properties that we do nonconsensual towing upon request for. They very much are in favor of this bill. I've sent to all of you a number of signatures of property manager. It's not fun. It's not fun for the person getting towed. It's not fun for the property manager, because these people are fussing at them as well as, you know, it's not a, it's not a fun thing, but it's a necessary evil. The places some of these people are being sent to are horrendous. I wouldn't go there in the daytime, let alone at night, to retrieve a vehicle. I just, I'm totally for keeping everything in the county, is, and it's the same position of many of my property managers.
Mr. Greenfield?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the council. It's nice to see you. It's nice to be back. My name is Aaron Greenfield. I'm here on behalf of the Maryland Multi-Housing Association. Our members owner-manage more than 27,500 units in the county. In addition, we represent some affiliate members, including tow companies. We're here favorable with amendments on this bill, and my testimony is being dispersed now. Thank you. As to the requirement that tow companies maintain storage and redemption facilities in the county, I'd urge the council to review the Verzi case, which held from the Court of Appeals that a similar mandate in Baltimore County violated the equal protection guarantees in the Maryland Declaration of Rights. So it's well worth looking at that case to determine how it aligns candidly with this piece of legislation. Concerning the blanket authorization provision, this is a tool that is critically important to our property members and our tow companies, especially when we're talking about vehicles that are parked illegally in fire lanes, in front of, excuse me, in front of fire hydrants, handicap spaces, and the like, late at night. And to require blanket authorizations in this bill, have a special carve-out just for gated access, restricted gated access, we think is unfair to private property without gated access, because, you know, we have members that would not have and should not have, quite frankly, property managers on site, you know, at 2:00 in the morning to be monitoring these things. So for those reasons, we'd ask that you strike that language related to the gated access, and otherwise, we'd support the bill.
I'm so used to turning on the lights back for a second.
You just ask.
Okay.
You may speak, Ms. Schewitt.
Are the blanket?
I want to turn to my microphone. Oh, yes. There we go.
Okay, I'm totally ready now to talk.
I'm not.
Are the blanket authorizations that you're talking about limited to those who are parked in fire lanes, in front of fire hydrants, or in handicap spaces?
They don't have to be, no. They could be parked illegally if there's signage, as an example, which would be consistent with the ordinance. So we would have to have signage if someone's parked in a location they're not allowed to be. In addition to fire hydrants and handicap spaces, then the blanket authorization would be, would avail, would be available.
And are these written blanket authorizations in writing between the owner and the tow company?
Absolutely, and the ones that I have reviewed and seen are in writing.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Ms. Karen Smith?
Is this the one? Okay. So, my name is Karen Smith. I live at 1723 Marley Avenue in Glenburne, Maryland, and I own NCR Towing and Recovery. I agree with this gentleman here, I'm sorry I did not catch your name.
That's right.
Okay. About the blanket letter, for one, most of the communities that you go in, everything is very spelled out. You have a sign that says "Fire Lane, Yellow Curb," you know, that's, that's pretty You have a sign that says "Fire Lane," "Yellow curb," you know, that's pretty spelled out. I don't think that there's too many people that don't recognize where they shouldn't park most of the time, you know, in a community, whether gated or not. But I am very much in support of the part of the bill that does say that we should keep the towing within the county. We should, I think we belong to have the revenue, the taxes, everything should stay within the county. Why should a company from outside the county benefit from our county, for one? And we did visit several of the neighboring communities that are towing from out of Anorono County, you know, to other districts. And some of them, you know, were pretty, were pretty bad, and I don't know if you had a chance to give the pictures to anyone, but I did bring them, of some of the areas that Anorono County is being towed to. But I do have them with me. And it kind of just gives you a visual of what you're looking at, but I can pass them on. What did I do with all of them? Oh, it's right here. Yeah, I can pass them on. It shows our county, and then it shows some of the outer lying areas of where the communities within our county are being towed to.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Charles Parish?
Good evening. So, it's nice to be down here. My name's Charles Parish. I'm the legislative chairman for Trespass Towing for the Towing and Recovery Professionals of Maryland. On the first part, we're against the bill as it's written, on the first part of the lot being in Anorono County. We're not against that because we do have members that are in Anorono County. Back in 2013, yeah, 2013, on Bill 5213, when I had the great pleasure of seeing some of your faces here and working with Chairman Jerry Walker, there was 12 items. This was one of the items that during the task force, Anorono County was the reason why. We went to 15 air miles because of the length of the county, and people below Mayo didn't have a choice of towers. But I understood and agreed with, and so did our association, that there were certain towers that they didn't want coming into the county. So, the 10 road miles, it went from 10 air miles to 10 road miles at that time. Today, if you do decide to keep the towers in the county, I ask that you expand the mileage back to either the 10 air miles or the 15 air miles. The argument was, they didn't want cars going across the bridge, and they didn't want city towers taking from Annapolis, Crofton, and other areas, Lenticum, going back into the city. So, with you making the lot now in the county, that fear would no longer be there, and I would ask that the mileage be expanded. Blanket authorization, I don't know where that word come from, because ever since the '70s, and I've been doing this for 30 years, no tower is allowed to decide what gets towed. Everything is under a contract and always has been, even in 2013. The contracts, which I emailed you all, and I sent you a sample, that sample is what I used back in 1990s. And on that contract, it's contract authorization, not blanket authorization. No tower has the right to decide what gets towed off a property. But at the same time, with Councilman Pruski had said about the dangers he was facing, there's even more serious dangers at 11:00 AM, 2:00 AM, 5:00 AM. And when you allow this law to go past, you're now just identifying that the property owner was that person that had that vehicle towed? The retaliations will start up again, and that's why in 2013, contract authorizations were allowed.
Thank you. Thank you. We're going to move on to Mr. Carter.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the council. My name's Thomas Carter, co-owner of Paladin Impound. We're a licensed tower for the county. We are located a half mile outside of the county, so we are just north of the county. And the reason for that is because the zoning and cost of finding property is so restrictive in Anorono County. So, the zoning restrictions are so very difficult to overcome, we can't, we've been searching for over two years for a property that would be suitable for a tow lot that's also reasonably priced. And so, it's very difficult to find property. When you do find property, it's very expensive to buy in the millions, 1.5, $2 million. That's impossible for a small business. We've been in business for 10 years. We could not afford to buy property at that price. It's just, it's impossible. And so, as properties that are properly zoned for what we do become more and more limited, it just becomes increasingly impossible to find a property to locate these automotive businesses for storage and impound. And so, that creates a hardship for us. We oppose this bill as written, because we employ 22 employees that are residents of Anorono County, and so, we would have to let those employees go if this bill as written goes through, because we can't find space inside the county that's affordable, that we can do business for the type of business that we do. Addressing something Mr. Parish said about the blanket authorization and the contract that covers, to put a point on that, so, we get feedback that a woman who, you know, a single mom, somebody who has special needs or, you know, physical disability, would need to call a towing company to identify someone parked in their space, fears that retaliation, is scared, even though they're disabled, they're afraid to call somebody to be towed out of their space. But they're disabled and can't move to their apartment, you know, very far, so they need to be able to park. They're scared to move, to call.
Thank you, Mr. Carter.
Thank you.
I have one more.
Madam Chair.
Oh, excuse me.
Thank you. If you all can stay for just a moment, I have a couple of questions, I apologize. Mr. Parish, I guess I was a little confused. You guys are an expert panel, in my opinion. You've got some real knowledge on this, and so, I want to hear your answers, because I think it's helpful to us as a council when we're considering this. But you had mentioned, I guess where I'm confused is the contract slash blanket authorizations for towing. You said you were against it, I think, is what I understood, but then it almost sounded like you were for it from some of the things you said, so I guess I'm not clear. Are you supportive of this idea that people don't have to call individually, sort of what Mr. Carter was mentioning, where the tow company can just kind of go up there and look, and they've got a blanket or a contract authorization to tow out? Is that, I guess what I'm not clear on is your position on that piece of the bill?
We, yeah, actually, we're for contract authorization. The word blanket authorization, we're assuming means the towers deciding. Contract authorization means Councilman Volk can fill out that contract, the sample I showed you.
Yeah.
Then, if I volatilities, we then tow it. That way, when Mr. Carter gets towed, it's the tower who gets the yelling and the screaming and is upset. I don't have to tell Mr. Carter that Mr. Volk called in his car to be towed.
Sure.
Blanket authorization, no tower should have the right, and we established that back in the late '70s.
Yeah.
No tower should ever decide a violation for your property.
Yeah, I think that's a fair point. I'm not sure that where, I don't want to speak for Mr. Pruski, but I'm wondering if this is a semantic difference, almost, if we're all kind of getting to the same place, but we're calling it different things. That's what it seems like to me, because it seems as though, at least from my perspective, we would want something like that, where there's a contract, there's a written agreement between the tower and the property owner as to when they're allowed to tow, and exactly what you're saying, it alleviates from the calling person the responsibility for that problem. So, I don't know that we're talking about two different things necessarily, but if you think we are, tell me.
Yeah, well, in the bill.
Yeah, I'm looking at it.
Prior to two years ago.
Okay.
There was a contract, so-called blanket authorization. Two years ago, it was determined, when Ms. Thatcher left, that somebody did, determined that there had to be somebody on the property authorizing at that time for a car to be towed.
Okay.
Somewhere, the interpretation got turned around. By you adding what you have into this bill.
Mm-hmm.
You've now eliminated the violations that Mr. Green has, Mr. Aaron had talked about, on a blanket contract authorization, because now, only a gated community, and if it's a permit, can be towed under a contract authorization.
So, as opposed to this sort of making it easier for property owners, is it your contention that this is frankly making it harder, and this is taking a step back for you? Okay, I understand now, thank you. Mr. Carter, oh, sorry, I had a question for you, sir. So, there was a picture floating around, and I don't want to unfairly single you out, but let me just ask you this. With respect to this bill and the redemption area and the storage facility components requiring that at the location for the redemption area or the storage facility, that they be owned, operated, and staffed during regular business hours to allow retrieval of the towed vehicles, would that be any problem for your business currently?
We're currently required to be manned and staffed 24 hours.
24/7?
Correct.
Okay. And so, you have someone there all the time?
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to be clear on this. If the bill were amended to change the word blanket authorization to contract authorization, that wouldn't help you either, would it? Because, wouldn't that also imply that contract authorizations elsewhere aren't allowed?
A contract authorization would be good. What needs to be taken out is the gated and permit parking only.
Okay, I assume that you know all or most of the towers in the county, and it's my understanding that there's at least one tower who believes that in order to be able to tow a car, the owner or agent of the owner needs to come out into the parking lot and say, "Yep, that car doesn't have a permit on it, and we need a permit." The sign says, "You need a permit to park here," every single time. The owner needs to come out and authorize it. You're saying that that's not really the way it should work?
That's not the way it did prior to two years ago, nor the understanding from this council and the state of Maryland and the towers. Up until two years ago is when that interpretation changed.
The interpretation of what?
Not allowing a contract authorization to be enough to tow a vehicle off a property. The sample that I sent you all.
Okay, I didn't, I didn't get that.
I'm sorry. I have a couple.
It's okay.
Oh, no, I have an extra. You give them.
Well, no, if you have an extra, I'll take it.
I would also add that the current, and we've had some exchange about this, the court current ordinance, 1116404C, doesn't in any way, in my reading.
Doesn't in any way what?
Doesn't in any way, in the way that I read it, preclude a blanket or a contract authorization, whichever term we're going to go with, currently. So, you know, I think there probably is some debate, some change in interpretation that occurred, but in my reading of the ordinance, a contract authorization would be sufficient.
And just perhaps to be overly clear, you're saying that towers currently, maybe across the board, but many, many have these contract authorizations right now to tow from a disabled spot, or to delineate what the spots are where they can tow without getting further authorization?
Correct. They do have the contracts, but we, my office, and we are being told, and I've been told tonight, that police officers and Mr. Bill Deck's office is under the assumption that someone, like you're saying, has to be on the property, that contract authorizations slash blanket authorization are not allowed as a authorized tow, that somebody has to be on the premises. And that's where the interpretation has changed.
Excuse me, we need to, do we have more questions for the panel?
Madam Chair, if I might be able to ask just one quick question of Mr. Parish.
Sure.
Again, I know you've got knowledge of sort of how this process works, like in the ground. If someone were, you know, coming home to their property, okay, I'm imagining an apartment complex, and someone is, you know, they have their own designated parking space, someone is parked in that parking space, and we've learned that, you know, towers cannot, you know, be spotters, they cannot go around looking for violators, how does the, how is the violation get to you? Like, the person who finds that person, who would they be calling? Would they be calling their property manager? Would they somehow have the telephone number of your company, or whatever company had the contract for that apartment complex? How does that, like, what's the line of communication there?
Under the interpretation that is now being practiced in Anorono County, you would have to call your property manager. At 11, after 6:00, how often does the property manager answer? Until 9:00 in the morning. So, realistically, no tow nor your problem is going to be resolved. Prior to that, prior to two years ago, the contract, spotting, which you brought up and under your own definitions, is a third party. Spoter is the person that is being paid to call a tower. A tower's primary task is to remove the violation. I'm hired, just like a pest control or any other company, under a contract, which I apologize, I thought I had one, I don't. We're hired to specifically see somebody parked in a fire lane, somebody parked in a reserved spot. We take photographic evidence. Our signs state the violations, no different than on the public streets, that you will be towed away. These signs are 24 by 30. It's a minimum. So, there's plenty of warnings. There has to be one every 7,500 square feet. That's how it used to be, and the tow truck would go in, take the pictures, tow the cars, send the pictures to the property manager. Within one hour, we're calling the police. We have to be open 24/7, and we have to give the vehicle back to the customer once they pay the fine, which is also regulated by the county. If you were to come out while I'm on the property, by law, I have to offer you a drop fee, which is half of what a complete tow would be. All that is regulated by the county. So, that would have been the process and should still be the process, but somewhere down the line over the last two years, it's now taken the white, the rights away from the property owner and allowed trespassers, such as what Councilman Pruski was talking about, violators just to get away with it, because they know a property manager is not going to be on site at 2:00 in the morning. They know at a vacant lot that that guy's not going to be there, and he puts seven cars on it with for-sale signs, and then he's got somebody trying to buy it the next day. Yeah, you can call us then, but at 2:00 in the morning next to a bar, and you have a pet shop, because this is one of my clients, he has a pet shop, and he comes out and there's broken bottles and everything else from the bar, and he's spending time cleaning. When we're allowed to monitor the property for him under a contract, looking for specific violations with photographic evidence, we remove that problem at 2:00 in the morning. He doesn't have to face it at 9:00 when him and his customers are coming in.
And that's not considered spotting?
That's not spotting. Spotting is a third party. Spotting would not be you or I, it would be the person that got paid to call me.
Okay.
And that's under, that's under definition.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification.
Thank you. State your name, and you have two minutes, sir.
Hello, my name's Harry Mayo, and I am the other owner of Paladin Impound and Recovery. I disagree with the bill as it's written. It would cause a hardship for Paladin Impound and Recovery to find the location inside of Anorono County, as my partner stated. We looked at possibly then if it was an opportunity for us to be grandfathered in or something to that effect. I disagree with the bill as it's written.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
I have no more individuals signed up. Is there anyone else that wanted to come forward?
Julie Johnson, P.O. Box 6634, Annapolis, Maryland. With respect to this bill, I'm not really talking about private parking lots. I own a road, a piece of land that's identified as being a road or right-of-way, and it has been litigated till the counts come home. Well, actually, my neighbors first sued me in 1978. The decision came down in 1980, and I still have issues and problems. It was decided that their right is limited only to driving over it to enter their property or to leave their property for the purpose of reaching the public road, which is what a right-of-way is, and that's the definition of, an easement of ingress and egress, to enter and to leave. And I've had this problem, that my neighbors have been quite persistent about trying to expand their property rights into being allowed to park there and occupy the land. But the definition of trespass is interference with the possessory rights of the property owner. That is, driving over something is a non-possessory right, because you're not going to be there very long, or walking across the property, which is another form of ingress and egress. You can ride your bicycle over it or do your roller skates, but you're not allowed to occupy the land. So, my concern is that the law, the state law is perfectly clear. Transportation Article 21, 1004, has the provision that if there is someone occupying privately-owned property, the property owner has the right to call. property, the property owner has the right to call the county police and have them issued a ticket, and upon request, they might even be towed, except that in Anaronda County, there is no, there's an issue about getting a towing company to tow away the offending vehicle.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Thank you.
So the point is to, I need a supplementary, I ask you to look for supplementing the bill.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Seeing no further movement in the audience regarding this Bill 8319, the public hearing is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Bill Number 8319.
Bill Number 8319, An Ordinance Concerning Licenses, Towing Companies, NonConsensual Towing, Storage Facilities, and Redemption Areas Blanket Authorizations to Tow.
Is there any further discussion? I do believe there's an amendment to this bill. Ms. Rodvian?
Maybe the amendment will address my concern.
I read.
Madam Secretary, please read Amendment Number One.
Amendment Number One. This amendment clarifies that the 10-mile distance restriction imposed on a towing company conducting a non-consensual tow from a parking lot to a storage facility is measured by driving distance.
Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Mr. Volk.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So just because Mr. Pruski and I have sponsored this amendment, very briefly, this clarifies that the 10-mile distance is a driving distance, a road distance, not an air mile distance, with which I think Mr. Parrish was alluding to, this has been some discussion over time. So this just is a clarifying amendment to this part of the bill.
Is there any further discussion on the amendment? Mr. Pruski? No. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Amendment Number One.
Mr. Volk?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Mr. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Amendment Number One is adopted.
Bill Number 8319, as amended, will be heard on December 16. We'll move on with our meeting. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 5019.
Resolution Number 5019, Resolution Confirming a Nomination of the Board of Trustees of the Public Library Association of Annapolis and Anaronda County Incorporated.
This is a resolution brought to us by the administration. I believe Ms. Kaylee Schultz and Kelly Kenny are here to address this resolution.
Wonderful. Yes, Resolution 5019 nominates Laura Brown to the Board of Trustees for the Public Library Association of Annapolis and Anaronda County Incorporated for District One. Mrs. Brown is a media specialist at Wheaton High School in Montgomery County, but she resides in Hanover. She also has her master's in library service. You should have her resume in front of you.
Thank you. Do you have any questions for my colleagues? Seeing none, we'll now open the public hearing. Remarks will be limited to two minutes. I don't have anyone signed up. I'll take that. The public hearing on Resolution 5019 is now closed. Madam Secretary, please read the title of Resolution Number 5019.
Resolution Number 5019, Resolution Confirming a Nomination of the Board of Trustees of the Public Library Association of Annapolis and Anaronda County Incorporated.
Do we have any further? Okay. Madam Secretary, please call the roll on Resolution Number 5019.
Mr. Volk?
Aye.
Mr. Pruski?
Aye.
Ms. Fiedler?
Aye.
Ms. Rodvian?
Aye.
Ms. Hare?
Aye.
Ms. Lacy?
Aye.
Ms. Pickard?
Aye.
Seven in the affirmative, none of the negative. Resolution Number 5019 is adopted.
Is there any other business to be brought before the council this evening? May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The county council is adjourned until December 16, 2019.